Let me call this meeting to order. First, let me make an announcement. We've got two members of council that are absent tonight. Derrick Rogers is in Chicago on business and Johnny Smith is sick today. So I hope Derrick's doing well in Chicago and hope Johnny gets to fill him. But let's do the invocation. Dear Lord, I pray that you would be with us today, be with this mayor and be with this council, and help us to conduct business in a business fashion for the city, for the citizens of this city. All this, in your name we pray, amen. Would you please, I pledge my...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is proposed approval of special call meeting, the minutes on May the 11th, 2015. And has everybody had an opportunity to review those? Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gray. Always in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, communications from the mayor, and the mayor's going to be kind of brief tonight. Yesterday, I went to a 50th wedding anniversary for Lamar and Sandra Harris. They have now been married 50 years and two days. Lamar and Sandra are special people. The food was fantastic. Ron was there. Lamar used to coach softball at PRA. He coached our oldest daughter. And they're special people. Another couple of announcements I'd like to make. American Family Care, which is located next to Walmart, they're going to have their ribbon cutting Friday at 11:30 a.m. They're open for business now. They're there seven days a week from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So if you're out Friday about 11:30, go by there. They're going to have plenty of food. They're going to have a grand time. And they're a great welcome addition to the city of Fort Oglethorpe. On the 20th day of June, and this is an annual event for Children's Miracle Network, Walmart will have a car show. And last year, they had a ton of cars there. Some of the cars were antique, they were fantastic. It's a great thing. If you've never been to a Cruze Inn, and we used to have Cruze Inns in downtown in Fort Oglethorpe, we no longer do, but if you've never been to a Cruze Inn, go down there if you like old cars. Even if you don't like old cars, go down there and have a grand time. Next item on the agenda, zoning matters. We have none. Next item on the agenda, third and final reading, the council meeting. Mr. Goulart.
Yes, sir. This is what I would ask is a motion to table the third and final reading of ordinance number 2015-01, and that deals with the rezoning of property located at 1565 Deets Road. The owner is Wanda Harwood. The request was to rezone from C2 Commercial to PM. Would like to have it rescheduled for the final, and third and final reading, and the public hearing, August the 10th, here at our regular meeting at 6:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to do so?
Make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask, at the special call meeting, there was a public hearing then, and he spoke.
The reason for it is because they requested, the purpose of it is that the state, they cannot get the, all of the forms and applications approved before then, and they figure that it would be in 2016, so they know that the PM zoning is one year. It expires in one year if they don't do any construction, so they want to wait until August the 10th to do it, is the reason.
Are you going to have to publish it again?
Yes, sir, and they've agreed to pay all the costs associated with it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Stenning?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, third and final reading, and ordinance to provide for the time of the regular city council meeting.
Ordinance number 2015-03, an ordinance to provide for the time of regular city council meetings, an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances, City of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, to provide for the provisions therein as is authorized by state law. Whereas the duly elected authority of the City of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia is vested in the city council, composed of a mayor and five council members, whereas it is hereby ordained by the governing authority of the City of Fort Oglethorpe, whereas the city, whereas the Fort Oglethorpe City Charter, Section 2.19, provides that city council shall hold regular meetings at such times and places as shall be prescribed by ordinance, whereas the code of Fort Oglethorpe, Section 2.36, provides for regular meetings of the city council. Whereas the mayor and council desire to change the regular meeting times as set forth in Code Section 2.36 by deleting said section in its entirety and providing for a new Code Section 2.36 as follows. The new Code Section, Section 2.36, "Regular meetings of the city council are held at City Hall or such other place as may be designated on the second and fourth Monday of each month at 6:00 p.m." And that's the third and final reading.
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Have a motion by Ms. Stenning. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion? Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Stenning?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, second reading, ordinance number 2015-05, Mr. Goulart.
Ordinance number 2015-05, rezoning be it ordained by the mayor and council of the City of Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, and it is hereby ordained by the authority thereof, Section 1, that the following property owned by Stephanie and Jason Doris, known as 309 Barnhart Circle, Fort Oglethorpe, Georgia, is hereby rezoned to a C2 Commercial Special Exception zoning. The second reading, the final, will be the next regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Goulart. Next item on the agenda, first reading of ordinance number 2015-06, development impact fee ordinance, Mr. Goulart.
Yes, sir. This is ordinance number 2015-06. It's an ordinance, it'll be a new ordinance, it's been, being adopted by other cities and jurisdictions throughout the state. It's an ordinance to amend the current Georgia Code of Ordinance, Part 2, Code, Chapter 94. And this is a land development impact fee, and it's to provide for the implementation and to provide for the enforcement thereof. Section 70-01 will be the general provisions. It will adopt the official code of Georgia annotated, the Georgia legislature through the enactment of the Georgia Development Impact Fee Act, which is found in Georgia Code Titles 36-71-1 through Title 36-71-13. This will be the first reading of this. It's quite lengthy. There will be a copy in the clerk's office, Carol Murray's office, if any of the public would like to review it. This ordinance takes three readings. In addition, there will be two, two public hearings addressing this.
Thank you, Mr. Goulart. Next item on the agenda, resolutions. We have none. Unfinished business, we have none. Communications from the city clerk, we have none. New business, interceptor sewer evaluation survey. Mr. Parker.
Back in March, Mr. Goulart and I attended a meeting at Moxon Bend wastewater treatment facility with the City of Chattanooga, Hampton County, Tennessee Department of Environment, and the US EPA. And it was determined during that meeting that the three entities, Fort Oglethorpe, Chattanooga, and Hampton County, would conduct an SSES of their respective trunk interceptor sewer systems that all converge at the Spring Creek Lift Station. There have been some ongoing issues over there, so this is an effort to determine what the cause is.
Phil, can you talk into the mic so...
Sure. This is an effort to determine the cause of these issues, or whether they're on our side of the system or the Tennessee side of the system. And I've obtained a proposal from Stevenson &amp; Palmer Engineering Firm from Smyrna, Georgia. They have an extensive background in this kind of work to, to do this SSES on our three interceptors. It's about 32,000 feet of pipeline that they'll inspect, they'll video it, they'll clean it, they'll set up flow monitoring and try to determine when we have weather like this, where the rainfall's getting into the sewer system, if it is in fact our side of the system that's contributing. The work will probably take around three to four months. It depends on the weather, basically. If we have a lot of rain, you know, it'll be quicker. But the cost of this is going to run around $140,000. The proposal is $140,200, and this can be covered with our bond money. We confirmed that today with the bond company lawyers, so...
So we need to approve the cost of this tonight, am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Gray. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Crawford. Any further discussion?
What's the, what are they saying? I mean, are they telling you, or is the government saying we are putting like punishments or fees or, you know, different things if this don't, if, say, we say tonight, we're not doing this?
Chattanooga's been placed under a consent decree with the US EPA. We've had an EUSEPA inspection last summer. They've elected at this point not to look at a consent decree with us at this point. But some of the requirements imposed on Chattanooga will roll over to the satellite communities, not just us, but, you know, East Ridge is going to be affected, College Dale's going to be affected, Lookout Mountain's going to be affected. We're just first. And so if we were to just ignore this, then yes, EPA would, it would be the federal EPA that would come down, and they would issue a consent decree, and we'd have, then they would force us to do it.
All right, on this testing, say, any smoke testing or anything like that, or...
No, not on this. What they will do is they will clean and televise, video inspect the three interceptors. They'll do flow monitoring at 25 to 30 locations for flow monitor. They'll inspect 110 manholes, that's an approximate number, and then they'll prepare a report based on the flow data from where we get to, when we get to rainfall, and give us a point of direction where we need to go to correct any I&amp;I issues that we may have. The reason, one of the reasons we're doing this is heavy rainfall flows also, heavy flows also come from East Ridge into North Georgia. And so there's a bit of a question as to whether the issue is ours, or is the system surcharging, and then our side of the flow has nowhere else to go.
Right.
And so that's what we're trying to determine, where the, where the issue lays. And like I say, Chattanooga and Hampton County are going to be doing these exact same things.
Will they check any individual laterals or anything like that? You know, say, water's coming in, and are they just checking the...
This, this project only will cover the three main trunk interceptors we have. We have the 24-inch that runs from the shop along Black Branch, we have the West Chickamauga Interceptor, which is relatively, and we have the Lindwood Interceptor, which is out right on the Tennessee-Georgia line. Those are the lines that they'll inspect. It's just the main trunks at this time. If they determine that a collector system is contributing, then that'll be something that we'll have to go in and smoke test or try to do something.
So we won't find out that the mayor's knocking his cleanout out to drain his yard down?
We won't find that out yet, but we will find it out.
Okay. How did it sound? Anyone else? Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Stenning?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, renewed property and casualty insurance, Mr. Goulart.
Yes, sir. This is, you know, we've been working very hard and very diligently for the past year to try to resolve the claims, and I know Mr. Stoltz has worked very, very hard on this, and Travelers Insurance Company has recognized that and are very satisfied with the way that the legal matters have been handled and resolved in a timely and equitable manner on behalf of the city. So they have agreed to renew our liability at a cheaper rate, almost $8,000 a year cheaper in light of that, and I'm asking for approval for the renewal premium in the amount of
Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Crawford.
Second.
Second by Ms. Stenning. Any further discussion? Mr. Crawford?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
Yes.
Ms. Stenning?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda, bandstand, Chris McKeever.
You have in front of you the packet that shows before and after of the bandstand, the repairs that were done through funding from the city, and we appreciate Mr. Goulart approving that, and also the paint job that has been done. And so I just thought that it was important that you got to see how beautiful it looks. A lot of the repair that was done was very much needed, and who knew that there was supposed to be a door under the stairs with a lock on it to keep all the children and the homeless people from living under there? But there was, and it had a World War II lock on it. So the door's been replaced, you'll see, you know, just fine, fine work done by Don Nance Construction. And then the painting, Kyle Russell, president of the museum board, had agreed to do the painting, but he is still at Fort Benning painting tanks. And so he contracted with a neighbor, Marty Talent Painting there on Barnhart Circle, and Marty did a beautiful job. And there was a crack in the concrete, he filled the slab, you'll see the work that he did on the columns, you know, wood filled them, and that's him on the ground painting up underneath the seats. So it's, it's beautiful, no one is going to get hurt up there, and lots of people like utilizing the bandstand, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, oh, let me ask one. Jerry Depkin, you're the historian, you know a lot about the history of the place. Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you mind coming so we can get you on the record? And I'm kind of blindsiding you, so you don't have any idea what I want to ask you.
That's right. You made that clear. If I can help, I will.
A few years ago, and I think we discussed this a few years ago, Walmart had contacted me, and they had a program of doing movies, outdoor movies, at night, and we were going to do those on the Polo Field. At that time, we had some type curfew on the Polo Field that you had lights out and had to be done and gone and finished at a certain time, before dark, so consequently we were not able to attain that goal, to do those movies because of that curfew. Do you remember any of that?
I remember the conversation that the city council had at one of their meetings.
Do what?
The council had that discussion at one of its meetings.
Okay. So we're able to do it now, why can't we do it now and we could not do it then? Which looks like we've had an accident.
Well, Brian's okay, that's the main thing.
We'll give, we'll be patient, Brian. We, we ready? Okay. All right, Jerry?
I'm not sure why you're directing this to me, because apparently it was some ordinance or some resolution that the city itself, the city council created that put that curfew on, had nothing to do with me, and it has nothing really to do with the history. I don't, I don't know why it was there, but it was there, and that was the discussion that was held, but if that has been changed, it had nothing to do with me or history or anything else.
The reason I asked you the question, I don't remember us voting to change that curfew, and, and I thought it was, do you, Mr. Goulart?
No, sir. This is the first time I've heard of it. We've been, I know that we've been showing movies up there, seems, I've not had the first complaint, so everything's okay.
Well, I mean, it's not a question of complaint or not a complaint, but we were told a few years ago that we could not do it because there was a rule that said the lights had to be turned out, and all programs had to end at a certain time, and consequently it would be, before we could show a movie, that we would have hit that timeframe. And that's, and I don't remember exactly...
Well, again, I never saw anything in print, no one ever presented anything in print, so I will, one more time chastise this entire town, I won't let anybody walk away from it. This town lives on pronouns. They said, I was told by them. Where is it in writing? Until it's in writing, grammatically written, you know, it doesn't exist. It exists in everybody's memory or thought process. There was, I know, at some point, some concern from the residents that the baseball games were going late. Am I remembering that correctly? And because everybody's cheering at 11 o'clock at night, I think you started curbing the time of that. But that discussion, which was done by the people sitting there at the time, and all it was, was, well, we were told, or there is. And again, I never saw anything in print, so I, I'm not one to get into this crosshairs.
So we were told, but we didn't see. So, well, you've answered my question, and I know the ball...
Well, I don't know who was told anything, because we, because it was never presented formally to say. All we, all I remember it being said, and we can go back to the tapes, is that we were told that. Who's we? What did they tell us?
I was told, and I went back to Walmart, and I personally told Mr. Steve Crowe that we couldn't do it, simply from the standpoint, it was a violation of the rule of the City of Fort Oglethorpe.
I'm telling you, no one ever...
I handled that.
But if you saw, if you have that in writing, that there was such a rule, that's a different issue. But if no rule existed...
No, I did not, I never saw it in writing. Mr. Crawford?
Well, then again, I don't know that it existed, so a lot of things get into, into discussion, and I will suggest, now I have a floor, that the city manager make sure that the Chattanooga, the Catusa Times makes a correction, because the article this morning said that this will be the last 6:30 meeting, because the rest are going to start at 5:30. It's not. You all just voted, it's going to start at 6:00. So here's one more thing that you, that Paula introduces a possibility, and now suddenly it's all in concrete. It's not, until you all voted 15 minutes ago to say 6 o'clock. That's what I'm talking about. Rumors start, and things get to be in concrete, and it's never in writing. It is now in writing at 6 o'clock.
Very good.
Can I? Okay. Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Crawford?
Doing noted.
There is, there is a rule that lights out at a certain time at the ball field, am I correct?
I...
There was when I was involved in PRA.
It would have to be a ordinance set by the governing body and us, and that's something that if Mr. Goulart can check on to see if there's a...
I can check on it, but when you were coaching, that was a long time ago, sir.
It really was, but they...
But since then, our, our recreation is no longer the PRA, we're the LFO RA, and in our bylaws, there's no, we just fall under the ordinances set by us, by the...
So there's not a time that you have to...
Not set by the bylaws of LFO RA. Now, we've, if there is a ordinance set by the city, which, Mr. Goulart, again, if you can check and see...
I'll be happy to check, but I'm not a...
And see, and that's it. We've always used the common courtesy, and Mr. McGrath, he's sitting over there, he knows that, he gets some calls every once in a while on that, but we try to use the common courtesy by, you know, 10, 10:30, unless there's something crazy going on, you know, we try to have them out. There's always special occasions that it happens, and, you know, we try to, and now with the new lights, that it's actually been a whole lot better on, we're getting more lights on the ball field instead of people's bedroom windows, you know, so...
And some of the people at Polo Field that were there during that period of time, and your dad remembers that, they wanted to hang heat, your dad, myself, both.
Right, and, and that's it. But, but to answer your question, by our bylaws, it just, we just fall under on those situations, the ordinances set by the City of Fort Oglethorpe, and if there is an ordinance on that, then we need to find it to clarify that. I think that would be the best and reasonable solution to the question you was asking hers, is let's just research the ordinance on that and, and see.
I'll look in the archives, see if I can find...
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goulart.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda, city manager's report, Mr. Goulart.
Okay, I would just like to state that I know that Ms. McKeever was commenting on the bandstands, and I approved the money, but I had some help from Councilman Craig Crawford and Derrick Rogers to help me sort out some money out of our budget, so thanks to them. The only other thing I want to state is that I know some of the residents are going to be inconvenienced, but we've got to replace the water lines, the water mains on Cross Street, so we will do everything we can do to make it as convenient as possible, but those lines are some 40 or 50 years old, they leak, and they've got to be replaced, so just bear with us. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Goulart. Next item on the agenda, city council comments, Ms. Stenning.
Thank you, sir. I had a wonderful opportunity today to visit Battlewood as I worked with the YMCA volunteering for their summer food and fun program. Fort Oglethorpe's finest again outdid themselves as Lieutenant Gilbert and Sergeant Goolsby came to play kickball with the children and then serve their meals. So if you get an opportunity, please volunteer with YMCA here in North Georgia. They serve 350 to 400 children each and every day, Monday through Friday. Wonderful program. On June 13th, family movie night. Bring your blankets and lawn chairs for a free movie on Barnhart Circle Polo Field. Movie starts at dark approximately 8:30 p.m. And this month is SpongeBob movie, Sponge Out of Water. Then on June 20th, keep those lawn chairs handy because we have another vintage baseball match. All these activities are free and family oriented here in the city of Fort Oglethorpe. We have so many wonderful activities just for our families, opportunities for free entertainment here. Go on over to the Chickamauga Battlefield where you can participate in several wonderful, I hope we don't blow away because of the storm, several wonderful guided tours and biking opportunities in the Chickamauga Park. On June 20th at 9:30, bring your bicycle and go for a bike ride. And sir, that is all, so that we can get out of here before this big storm takes us away.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gray?
I have nothing.
Mr. Crawford?
All I'd like to say is tomorrow is my big sister's birthday, I'd like to wish her a happy birthday, and my father is Friday, his birthday's Friday, so...
Happy birthday to both.
Yeah, happy birthday to both of them, that's all I got.
Citizens petitions... Citizen petitions, we have nothing. Executive session, Mr. Stoltz, do we, appeal hearing has been put off, the attorney could not be present tonight?
That's correct. It would be continued indefinitely. His attorney will notify us when he would like to have his schedule.
Mr. Smith is not here, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Always in favor, say aye.
Aye. Please travel safely home.
Be careful going home.
USA, we have a team fight tonight, 7:30.